6:00 PM, I'll call this meeting to order, ask everyone to join me in the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our first order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And next up, we have review and approve the minutes from the August 14th regular select board meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, that's okay. Open public comment. Dale.
Mostly you know me, um, for the new fans of you, I'm Dale Christie, um, Chairman of the Beaver Pond Committee. And I got contacted by a local resident that's their, his family has been a long time supporter of the pond and he had a great idea. Kerry and I intend to mend our pond and we endorse the idea so far. I think it's a great idea and I'd like to introduce Mitchell Knowles as the chair speaker of the idea. I figured I would talk about it with you and make sure we had your support before we go anything further. It involves, he'll explain, but it involves some other permissions that haven't been made yet, but we just wanted to lay the groundwork, make sure everybody was on board.
Mitchell, floor is yours.
Alright, um, my name is Mitchell Knowles, I'm a lieutenant director at Proctor High School. I'm also working to get my Eagle Scout right now. And one of the final things I need to do is work on my Eagle Scout service project, which is supposed to be a project that benefits the community in some way through a team that I am supposed to lead. Uh, recently, my family went hiking up the ice caves in Burlington and at the beginning of their trail there, they had a wooden box, like a birdhouse, uh, but it contained yak tracks, which are like clipped on to your shoe that keep yourself sturdy on ice and dirt and anything loose. Uh, it makes it safe to walk, safer to walk. My idea for an Eagle Scout project would be to put a head, a box of those, maybe four, at each end of the trail while talking with the Beaver Pond Committee. We thought maybe putting them a little past the heads of the trail inwards just to prevent people from walking by and taking one and leaving. And we also thought that the library could be a place to store them during the summer, a place to loan them during the winter, it would be a benefit. I spoke to Lisa Meyer about this already and she approves of the idea and thinks it would be good. I'm just looking for permission to work on this project through you guys.
And all funding will be raised by you and no cost of the town.
Yes.
Thank you, Mitchell. Can you see from the board?
Sounds like a great idea.
I agree, and I'm a fan of yak tracks and I put on many miles on the sidewalks in this town and I wear the yak tracks.
Good.
They're effective. It's ambitious if you're gonna do the fundraising to buy, purchase a number of those. They can be a little pricey, but it sounds like a good project.
Thank you.
How many others do you have helping here?
Um, as of right now, I haven't spoken to any kids specifically to help me, but there's another scout in town that I assume I would be able to convince, Aiden Hall, who's also in Scouts. Um, and then I would be able to convince my friends probably and working with my father, I would be able to assemble boxes at his shop.
They'll probably be high-end boxes then, he's doing mahogany wood or something.
I think that sounds like an excellent idea, Mitchell. Thank you for, for, um, doing something to make our town even better, so that's amazing.
So what do you, you need a signature or something from somebody, like either the Beaver Pond Committee, the town manager, or the support saying, hey, we endorse this and we support this idea, right?
So to submit my project and have it be reviewed to see if it would be accepted as an Eagle project, there's a lot of signatures I need. Um, some of them include the beneficiary accrual, so I would need signatures from either the town or someone from the Beaver Pond Committee just to approve that I can work on this project. I believe it's only two signatures.
I'd be willing to sign that.
There we go. I'm sure anybody on the board would be more than happy to sign.
Yep.
So maybe one from the town manager and one from the Beaver Pond Committee and...
I think that's perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited about this project.
Excellent.
And if one gets lost or walked, you know, walked away, I guess in the recreation budget we have could replace one or two occasionally.
Not often. Might come up in...
Sure.
The beneficiary representative right there. Sorry, it's low quality, it's been emailed back and forth.
Let's see. There you are. You're welcome. Now you're slugging me in on here.
Using support.
You're also gonna own, you're gonna own a timeshare in Killington.
Looks like just yes. That it?
Yep.
Awesome. You're very welcome. Good luck with it all.
Thank you very much, Mitchell. Alright, any other comments for open public comment?
Did you do my answer, um, that I asked two weeks ago on the loader and the pickup?
About the what?
The loader and the pickup.
Yes, the loader was down at the salt shed because they were using it down there for something, so they had it down there. The pickup truck is something that they need to get rid of because it's basically, if that's the one you're talking about that's buried in the shrubs down there?
Why is it buried after what?
Well, it was left there a while back and then it didn't work, so now they're gonna try to auction it off at least to get rid of it.
How come it wasn't fixed?
Because I think it was beyond repairs, it wasn't worth putting the money into it.
Did you get a price?
I'm sure that the public works did.
You didn't get a price, okay?
I didn't get a price personally, no.
Number two is the loader I asked, I, she told me just the opposite. I wanna know where it was. Was it in the salt shed? It was. They took it off money and they left it off. The loader should not be in that salt shed. It's gonna eat it. We know it was installed us and that's a $300,000 piece of equipment. And also another thing, why are we using a zero-turn lawnmower that's made for lawns? Why are we buying the edge of the road with the zero turn? When we have a tractor that does that, that's what it's made for. That's zero turn, we bought that, it was like $12,000. And that should only be used for the lawn, not edge of the road up and down West Street and every down Beaver Pond and out of this town. I've seen them drive it and they just, they beat it, beat it, they did that.
We can look into that, John. Anything else?
Are we working on those or are we just gonna let it go this winter?
They've been working mostly on West Street, trying to get the edging done there and the driveway's taken care of, so. And then I also have one...
Why are we working on West Street when that was supposed to be done before the paving?
No, it was part of the contract to do afterwards, so, so they're doing that now.
Who's doing it?
Our guys are.
It should have been done before the paving.
No, and hey...
How could they do that, John?
It's paved, you don't know what the level of the paving is. So they would know what to fill in, they could fill it in, the paving would be above or below it still, so they had to wait till it was complete. So they've got that under control and then I have one of the other guys doing a lot of maintenance around here. I don't know if you noticed, your sign is straightened out outside now. And the front patio is all cleaned up, all the banners have been taken down, so they've been doing a lot. I'm happy with it.
Anything else for open public comment? Okay, um, moving on to discussion and action items, everybody's had a chance to sign the bills and the orders? Alright, moving on to the Chittenden Reservoir Emergency Action Plan, or CREEP.
So I've been playing a lot of catch-up and I'm, this is all gonna be, this is all part of my manager's report too as well, so, but I can, I can raise it now, so, um, the creep was basically part of the Chittenden Dam breaching and what they've done is Proctor and West Rutland were not part of that breach. Um, so now they're including both towns and they're redesigning a map that will have Proctor and West Rutland in it, so when, if there ever to be, and they've guaranteed me that it probably would never breach unless it, in the act of God even, they said, but it would be like a terrorism act. So if the dam ever did break and release, that the water actually would come all the way down to as far as West Rutland, Proctor. Proctor would definitely be the last that it would hit, so we'd have more time than everybody else. So it's, um, so we meet periodically and what it is, it's a lot, because they basically explain the whole dynamics of the Chittenden Dam and who owns what and what parcels and what pieces of it. And the most of it is pretty much managed by Green Mountain Power because they, they own the dam. So, um, so they're gonna get the, we sent in contacts, so, um, myself, Ben, and Kevin Blongi are the three that they asked to be, um, they asked somebody from the town and then, you know, usually it's the chair, um, and Blongi was on there just because he was part of the emergency plan before. So he's asked, um, I've asked him to be on it and he said he would too, so. Once they've gotten all those names, they're working on, uh, preparing the maps right now for us and then they'll kind of update you, so. So it's definitely a precautionary measure more than anything else, so.
Alright, uh, Storm Water Master Plan and Community Need.
Yes, so the Storm Water Master Plan is something that, um, has been in the works for quite some time and in order to go over the, uh, the plan, the community has to be aware of it, just in case they have questions, comments. So we have to schedule a meeting sometime in September and I'm thinking we'll probably host it. We could have it here, so I don't think there's gonna be an abundance of people, but maybe, um, the library, Lisa? We could hold it there, um, because that would be a good space. So it's just to kind of hear about the master plan and, you know, if anybody has questions on it, um, what, you know, what we're trying to implement and what we're trying to do with that plan. So that'll be September and we'll notify everybody. We'll put it on, we'll post it just like we would a meeting and we'll also put it on the webpage.
Uh, moving on to Town Office Heating and Lighting?
Yes, so we've been looking at getting heat pumps for the town office and changing this lighting to be more user-friendly. Um, I kind of just put two lights on, otherwise everybody's blinded because it's so bright. Um, so we've got, um, we've gotten a quote on that and what we're gonna do is go out to get a couple other quotes for the heat pumps, but for the lighting, that was under the 3,000, so we think we might just go ahead with, um, with that, with, um, Jeff, Jeff Patch and do the lighting for us. And then the other for the heat pumps and what they're looking at is one or two in here and one in that back office, so that it keeps it cool, so we don't have to run the air conditioning in the summer because we can't hear each other, um, and then to heat it up. Because I'm cold all the time, so I don't want to. So, um, so we're gonna get some prices on that, so we'll go up to bid on that too. Any questions on?
Yes, on that one. Have we ever had an energy evaluation or audit, just to see what we may need for heating and cooling capacity in these two rooms?
I feel like we did once before, yeah, like after even...
Would we have those figures?
As far as cost?
No, how many BTUs they're talking about?
Oh, oh, okay, um, I don't know. I would think so, but I can reach out to them too, to the energy.
That would be nice to know and help, you know, make an informed decision as to which plan we would wanna go with, if we are gonna go with one of those.
Okay.
And I think we had an audit done about a year ago, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, I know it was after this was done over.
Because the cooling we need, because we have none outside of that window, air conditioner. And the heating on that side is to augment what we have because it's inadequate, right? Because I've heard that office is cold. And then might we be able to, you know, leverage it against, uh, clean heat standard that Vermont is trying to implement?
Right, right. Okay.
You know, and if we do get the BTU on the heat side, we might be able to see if one of those options might be able to address, you know, those requirements, the heating requirements for these two rooms.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, man.
I just went through heat pumps installed in my house, I have a little knowledge of how to share them. Because you have a head unit on the outside or a base unit, they have to be plunged to the interior units. And if you're talking about one in that office and one maybe on this side, those would likely be served from one unit on that side of the building. But one over here, you're not gonna run it all the way around the building, so mostly likely it would be another unit on the other side. And I was originally recommended more than what I have and I've been surprised at how effective they are. And for this size of room, I, I just get the feeling that if it was me, I would recommend just trying one unit on the outside of that side and have two units and then maybe add another later if needed.
Yeah, because the outside, the exterior one would be out here, so you would be able to see it.
We didn't price a unit on this side.
Now, the units that, we did price, there were two-zone and three-zone units.
Maybe have four of them on one side.
Thank you.
Anything else for, excuse me, the Town Office Heating and Lighting? Town Garage Heating Alternatives?
So I've been talking to, um, Kyle about the, um, alternatives for heating down there at the garage, just because, um, as far as space, they use a lot of wood. So we're gonna do like a cost analysis too to see the cost of wood versus if we put, again, a heat pump in there or what the alternatives are. It's just something to be, we're kind of looking into and examining. Um, the wood and the furnace itself take up a large part of the garage and if that were out of there or reduced, you have a lot more space for storing things, so that was one reason for it. And it is cold because if they're not working and they come in, by the time they get the stove going and the wood going, it's, you know, midway in the morning and stuff and they go in, it's like 40 degrees in there when they're starting to work, so. So it's just something I just wanted to throw out there, just to kind of have everybody be aware of it, that that's a thought process that we're kind of working on, so.
Any questions about that? Uh, West Street Fire Damage Cleanup Update?
Yes, so I've been dealing, trying to track down a asbestos report that was supposedly done on the property 28 years ago. Um, no one seems to have it anywhere, so, um, the state is still searching to see if they have it someplace in their files because sometimes they have a lot of, um, reports that they will just keep forever. So there's still, I'm still waiting to hear back from them, but if that's not the case, then we need to get a, um, inspector out there, a certified inspector out there to check for asbestos, write up a report and then we do the request for the demolition. And I've kind of put a timeframe on it within my connection with, um, the people who are helping the maces on West Street, um, that we'd like it cleaned up completely by November 1, so, because it's been kind of taking too long.
Do you still want to defer?
Yes.
Why are we getting involved in this?
Because we want to...
Are we gonna end up paying for all this, like you're saying?
No, we're, no, they've hired somebody to clean up, but we had to stop the cleanup because people were complaining that there could be asbestos. So the state made us stop, um, cleaning it up until we filed that report. So we have to do that. And then the guy will go back and start cleaning it up, so.
I don't know why we're getting involved, they should, they should take care of it on.
Well, partially because we're looking out for the neighbors too, because it's a mess and it's a danger and it's drying the animals down there, it's drying, it's just an eyesore and people, you wouldn't want your neighbors, you know, looking out your window seeing that. So we're kind of helping to push it along, so doing it for the benefit of the other people that live there.
Anything else on West Street?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Alright, no other business. Um, is there a motion to recess the regular select board meeting and convene the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, Zion Growers Equivalent User Rate.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hi Travis.
Thank you for saving your time today and putting me on the deck, I appreciate it. And I apologize for missing the last meeting, I was away in Philadelphia, or Pennsylvania. Um, I'm here today to discuss the equivalent user rating that we have been given. Um, basically, as per the letter I sent to the Board, uh, we feel that the EU rating that we have been given of a five has been, is, well, more than we actually are using. Um, in all reality, I understand, prior to this, um, it was a 10 for the building. Um, and at that time, there was a deal made between Preservation Trust and, um, the Selectmen at the time, or whoever was running the town at the time, um, for a 10. Um, to be clear, that a 10 EU rating based on what I have for the town, what the town has set forth would be about 300 people per day in that building for us to reach a 10. Now, I do appreciate the fact that the Board gave us a 5 and cut that number in half, but for us to reach that number annually, we would have to have 150 people in that building working per day. Now, from my understanding from the Board decided last time, again, I apologize I missed that meeting, but we had, um, from the letter I have here to set forth that we have roughly 26 people at most at any given day for visitors to the museum on a maximum day. So that would put us at visitors, which there is not an equivalent for in the, um, the regulations that the Board has set forward. So we use the EUs of 5, which would be 5 gallons per person per day for visitors to the museum. Now, for, um, commercial properties, it is 15 EUs per person per day. So we have about seven tenants in the building, we have eight people total out of those seven tenants. So if we go to the maximum of any given day that the museum has had at most, their average is actually nine, but if we say they go by their biggest day, it would be 30 people. So that means on any given day at most, I have 38 people in that building currently on a day-to-day basis. According to my calculations, that would put us at roughly a 1.26? Yes, a 1.2. If we include the water cutting that goes on by the marble company there, we give an equivalent user of 1, based on Johnson Marble Company's cutting, which is currently a 5. So, uh, speaking to both of those gentlemen, the owners of those two properties, um, they both agreed that Proctor Marble Co. uses about 20 to 15% of their overall usage annually, which would put them at about a 1. So that means that according to the math set forth here, which I provided last time I was here, would put us at a 2.26. So what I'm here today is to ask is to have that moved and to understand how we ended up at a 5 EU rating.
We weren't sure how many guests were at the museum since it reopened, one reason. And we're not sure how many tenants you do have.
Sure.
I think basically, when it originally was calculated, it was also calculated as a factory. So everything was categorized, like we had schools, we had churches, we had, you know, residential, we had factory, so everything was calculated. It wasn't really factoring in what, what, it was looking at what the capacity could be and not what it really was. So we based it off of that, that's just how the formula they've used all along.
So according to this, um, based on equivalent users for commercial buildings, which we fall under, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 other buildings that are put here under commercial EU ratings. Um, the lowest of those is Omea, which is a 1. Um, us being a 5 puts us next to Johnson Marble Co., which I mentioned before, Proctor Elementary and Proctor High School. Now, Proctor Elementary and High School have about 140 students on average in their building. So for a commercial building, while I do understand it is commercial rating, Omea's ability to have a 1 and still be a commercial building comparatively to a residential EU, which is also a 1, which is 450 gallons in per day, it seems that, you know, without anybody contacting me and asking me how many people we've had, considering I submitted the letter with laying out everything that I mentioned and then submitting to the Board which I submitted, I just have a hard time understanding how I ended up at a 5 after submitting that letter and explaining in great detail why we thought it was a little too high for us.
So I think there's probably a number of factors involved. I mean, we also, part of this is done for budgeting purposes when we're setting the water rate, which has already been done. Um, I think the other issue is, you know, you have to look at the potential for use. Um, there are some people who live in a home and there's just one person who lives there. They do pay the same as someone who has a home with five people in their house. So, I mean, because we don't meter our water, I think that is kind of, it's, it's probably not the best way we can do it, but it's the way that, that we can do it and still prepare and so budget and still have, um, an idea of how we can set our water rate every year.
Okay. Um, while I do understand that, there is a provision actually in the Water Drinking System Regulations, give me one moment here, I have it highlighted, but it specifically states, um, any changes of uses, um, section 12 of Article 3 states that unless reasonable advance written notice of such disuse, diminished use, or vacancy of the premises has been given, that the Superintendent Commissioners have authorized any abatements, which means that there is a present, there is a piece in here that basically says any use of, uh, change of use, whether that be more people, less people, can be submitted at that time. So any changes, say we close down the museum, as long as we submit that in writing to any changes, that is what we based on. With all that said, the way that this is written and the way that the town has set this forth states that it is by use, not by assumed use. So I, I, while I do understand that there is an understanding that at some point this will be up and running to a large degree, currently, as I said, we have 38 people there on a regular basis. At most, we're looking to hire an additional 10, that would put us at about 48. Um, as I said, to reach a 5, we would have to have 150 people annually working in that building. This is, I'm, I'm saying for, I'm giving you the 30 people, 15 gallons per day. Commercially, it is 15 gallons per person per day per shift. That means for 30 people, I would have to have working daily, an eight-hour shift to reach one EU. The guests that are at the museum on a daily basis are not there for more than an hour or two and that's not a full shift, which is why I use the EU of 5. To be generous with that, to say, okay, let's say they're there for, you know, the same amount as a regular worker, a 15 gallons per day, that still doesn't even put us in the realm of 150. Um, and while I understand the changes of use, I'm more than happy, as I submitted in the letter previously, to submit any changes at any given point of any changes that we do to hiring, um, whether that be adding additional tenants, whether that be to closing a museum, the museum having a larger, um, population, and I am more than happy to submit those records to you of the regular visitors and users, as I stated before. Um, so I, again, I just don't quite understand the, the mathos, but all I understand that is to some degree, an assumption moving forward and a budgeting assumption, I am trying to make this building usable. And to do that, I cannot spend the money for water and sewer that I am not using to fund other products around the town. We want to be a good neighbor, we want to be part of the town and we want to make sure that we pay our dues as a town, but we also want to make sure that we are being treated equally to everyone else, um, as far as the water usage goes and that be calculated using what the town has set forth. Um, as I said, I'm more than willing to submit any changes, any amounts of people that we change to and I'm more than happy to set forth that 30 people per day and if we end up on an average doing more, I've been more than willing to submit that as well. Um, but I, I can't pay for 150 people that are in that building on a daily basis, that's simply up there.
Which do you pay for water?
Uh, one EU is 450 gallons per day, water is 545 per EU, sewer is 535 per EU, which puts, um, about $5,000 annually, um, for our current water and sewer rate, this would cut it in half.
Can I just ask a question? First of all, I think probably should be Article 12 and 14, that the entire, you didn't leave the first part of the...
I know, I was basically discussing the part about any changes that go along with the water use that go along.
But it says in the beginning, no abatement... But it says in the beginning, "No abatement of charges, rates, or rents for or for any in connection with water supply shall be allowed by reason of disuse or diminished use of such services or vacancy."
Without written submission prior to the council.
So why didn't that happen prior to July 1? And I'm just curious.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You were attended here, you've been here, because the town's been supporting you, and we've applied for block grants for you, so you've been aware of that. But secondly, if, if you allow this and reduce it more, how do you justify then, when people have come in and asked to have residential rates reduced or abated because they're going to Florida for 6 months, or when people have vacant homes? So, I, I just, when we're talking about equity, that, that all falls into place here. And so, I...
I would, I would say that during the time that these rates were set, we were not reached out to when we had a 10. The previous town manager and previous head of the Board for the Preservation Trust of Vermont made a deal for 10 EUs. I think anybody living in town knows that at no point has there been 300 people plus in that building on a daily basis annually. We're simply asking that the math that was set forth, we were not reached out to about that for any point. I'm trying to simply run the building next door. I was not aware that, it was assumed that we had 150 people per day in my building, which we just never have, it's not one time that we ever had anything even remotely close to that. So I'm simply asking, as a new person to this town who wasn't aware that this was how things were done, that the math that is set forth for everybody else that is located in this town, we be treated the same way.
Okay, a couple of things. One, you're a property owner, you knew when you took ownership of that, because unless something odd happened, all of that transfers. So, and there was no deal made. You can go back and look in town reports, and it's been 10 for a number of years.
Can I ask how you came to a 10?
It doesn't make any difference how I came to a 10, I'm just saying that's what it said there. It wasn't a deal with Preservation Trust, as you're stating. It states that when you look back over the years in the paperwork, that's my comment. I'm not saying how they came to a 10, I'm just saying that, and with respect to having to reach out to people individually, that's not the responsibility of anyone, whether it's the Board or not about that. You're a property owner, we're all adults in here, no one's reaching out to me when rates are going up. That's my responsibility to be aware of that.
And that is why I'm here today. You don't use, this is one of the only towns I've ever been in, in the history of my life, and I've lived a lot of places that doesn't use standardized water meters like everyone else.
There's a lot in Vermont, so...
I, I apologize for that. I can simply say here that at a 10 to have 300 people, which at a 10 is $10,000 per year is what the Preservation Trust is paying. I don't think at any point they had a 10 of an EU rating in that building. You can call that a deal, you can call that whatever you like, but I would like to say that there's no possible way that, based on the math that the town has decided on, that that rate made sense ever. It is an annual rate, that means 300 people every day, every single day in that building. That was what a 10 was required. I don't think anybody who was in here ever would have thought that there were 300 people in that day, in that building on a day. I just, while I understand what you're saying, I simply don't understand why this is used as the rate system if that is not what is to be followed.
It talks about capacity, that's what it talks about, capacity of the building.
Yes, but then you have a gallons-per-day rating for...
It does, but it also talks about capacity in the order, so...
Capacity, I mean, our capacity would be 1,000 plus people, but that would not, I mean, that would put us at almost $30,000 a year, if not more. And I don't think anybody in here would think that would be a reasonable thing to charge us. So while I understand the capacity argument, I don't think knowing the actual amount of people in that building makes that argument fair to a property owner. I just don't see how that's possible.
At one time, that must have been categorized as industrial. The marble shop must be categorized as industrial, you know? And I was new to the Board, and I was surprised myself to see it listed as a commercial.
I, I mean, I...
And it shouldn't be, it should be industrial. If you look at the definitions in that support...
So for this ordinance, is there an industrial that I'm missing here?
When you look at the definitions, right. I don't, I didn't see any in there, industrial, there should be.
That's, that's...
Marble Shop and Johnson should be industrial.
Yes.
And it's industrial usage, it's, you know, it's the equipment, it's the process. So there's many other applications that uses the water. You keep referencing 300 people, wow, this is, you know, for the business side, the commercial side, I can see that. But there are other drivers that...
I understand, and that is, that is why when I took you taking into account for the Procter-Marble Co., for what they do, I use Johnson Marble Co. that is rated as a 5 in here to make that determination, which is why them on their own as a business is a 1 EU, which is 450 gallons per day. So I did rate them according to another business in the area, based on the fact that they obviously use more water than the average people. So I took that into account, which is why the 1.26 only takes into account people, and then the 2.2 takes into account the fact that we have 1 user there that clearly uses more water than everybody else.
And we're based on, because unfortunately, we don't have water meters, and, you know, as a town, we oppose, you know, the water meter. So we're doing the next best thing, and that's equivalent users. When you think of equivalent users on the residential side, it's a single-family dwelling, ordinary, single-family dwelling. Well, what's a ordinary, single-family dwelling? Today, if you look at the last census, it's 2.35 people per dwelling. When that unit cost was developed, I don't know when it was developed, but it was based on ordinary family. And back then, it may have been 4 or 5 occupants. So that's probably how they came up with the $450 price. You know, whereas today, at 2.35, you know, that should be, you know, at best, 300 gallons per month. So, equivalent user, we're saying, you know, at one time, it was probably 5, and they came up with 450. Today, out there, it's 3, so it should probably be 300 per ordinary. So, actually, you know, the, the ordinary home now should only be charged 2/3 of an EU. And yet, they're paying, you know, 1 EU on average. So, yeah, they're not overpaying, it's a wash, because if there's fewer users or fewer EUs used, you're dividing into the expenses, and so you'll just come up with a higher EU price. So, so in the end, we pay the same, it's just that we're only using 2/3 of what we're saying we're being billed. So, equivalent users on the residential side, why shouldn't it be applied towards the commercial and industrial side? You know, we should bill them for the 150% of their usage. You know, that's what we're doing with the residential, well, we should use that.
I mean, I would suggest then maybe the residential needs to be re-looked at, but that's... Well, yes, that's, that's...
That's another...
That's a separate issue. I mean, we are more than happy to set a lot at 3, but I just don't see how a 5, it just... I, like I said, if we don't include the museum, we're talking about 8 people per day. I'm more than happy to bite the bullet and say 30 people per day is 1 EU for the entirety of the museum, which is guests who are there maybe half an hour now, or anybody's been in the museum, it doesn't take 3 hours to go through there. So I'm just simply asking for something that's a little closer to what we're actually using as opposed to a number that you feel is closer to what it should be. I mean, I just question why this is the way it is if this isn't what the town's going to follow. That's, that's my symbolism.
And I would like to think that we are going to follow, you know, the ordinance and the policy. But I would like to, on the industrial side, see what the equipment is, see what the processes are for where the water is being used, what is being used, how it's being used. Now, calculate these figures.
I'd be more than happy to provide any of that information. It's a little hard, as we don't have a meter for them, so it's hard to say, calculate how much they use them. That's why, again, I base it off of, try to base it off of Johnson Marble Co. to give us that number for them. But if there's a way for us to come to that number and actually parse that out, I'd be more than happy to work with you on getting that.
I'd like to make a note, man, that we postpone this to our next meeting, so Albert can take a look at what they have over there.
Well, I would, whomever looks at it, I would think they would look at every tenant. You know, it's just not, the marble works, but it's every tenant. And then, again, I would like to review the policy to see as to, you know, I'm sure you probably have a sprinkler system. You know, I don't know if that plays into it or not, into the formula, and that, it's probably annual testing, you know, and, you know, flowing water through it, so those things would have an impact on it. It's just not the visitors that were coming to the building.
So for the sprinkler system, most of there we have, we do have a large holding tank. I can't give you the exact number on it currently, but it is one fill, it's stated.
Yes, correct.
So, I, I'd be more than happy to get that information and provide it. And of course, if there's any changes to the ordinance or anything like that, I'd be more than happy to discuss that, and whatever you all decide as a Board, that is what we decided. I'm simply trying to follow what was set forth and what is currently on the books, and that's all I'm trying to do.
So, Bush is on the floor to postpone, and Albert, if you're amenable to meet with them and take a look.
Yes, I would do it. Like I say, I would like to visit our tenants.
Sure. If that's okay with...
I'd be more than happy to do it. Um, that, just, the, part of the commercial piece of this, that Omea regular store is rated as a 1, and I don't know how that was decided, but again, for a commercial building to be rated a 1, it just, there just seems to be something going on there that I don't understand.
When you refer to Omea, are you talking about the geology building?
I'm, whatever, whatever is in town ordinance that's rated as a 1 as a commercial building, that, I'm assuming it's that building, I can't say. But I, I just noticed here that there is a commercial building that's rated a 1 EU that is also the same rating as a residential unit. So that's why I'm a little confused, because it is clearly possible for a commercial building to be rated the same as a residential unit as it's listed here.
So, a motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you Travis.
Moving on to delinquent accounts and show-offs.
Okay, so everybody has the delinquent report, and these are delinquent accounts that had agreements and have been broken. And like I said, it was run through Friday, so I'd like to wait to run it through this week, because then it's the end of August and there'll be a clearer picture. But, my guess is, they won't be paid, so these are potential shut-ups. And just so you know, from the last meeting we had, there were 11. There is only 4 now, so 7 did come in and pay out.
Any questions regarding the delinquent accounts?
When we could be doing shut-ups?
I'll get to Kyle probably, I'm hoping like next week.
Thank you.
Except, like I said, I wanted to wait till for, you know, the end of this month.
Any other business for water? If there's none, do I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Water Commissioners and convene the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything for the sewer commissioners?
I have nothing to add, um, nope, nothing.
Okay. Alright, if there's nothing for the Board of Sewer Commissioners, do I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Sewer Commissioners and reconvene the regular select board meeting?
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Departmental reports, Sheriff's Office.
I didn't see anything that jumped out at me.
Just to make everybody aware, there was another car broken into in Procter last night. So, off of South Street, so just lock your cars and...
Lock your cars and please call the sheriff, even if nothing was stolen, just so that they're aware.
We'd like to contact Sheriff too.
Alright, Public Works.
We've got Kyle's report.
Yep.
Is there any questions on it, or...
South Street turned out nice.
Yep.
Looks good. Do we have a little more money for paving?
Uh, yeah, we haven't finalized that one, but there is enough, but I don't know if it's enough to do much of any. Although, there are some roads that are pretty rough.
Once we pay those bills, we'll be able to take a look. Town Manager's Report.
I just go back on that one item, I was just going to ask if, you know, because they've done a good job doing the trimming and cutting of the limbs on the sidewalk. There's one section with sumac on West Street between Market and Kizer Energy, the house across the street, that, you know, when I walk through there, I have to go out on the road, and with the schools going to be opening, you know, they were probably doing the same thing to get around those trees that overhang the sidewalk there.
Is that on Cross Street?
No, it's on School Street.
Oh, on School Street.
Between Market Street and the house across the street from Kizer Energy.
Oh, okay, okay. Is it our tree, or...
By the gas.
Wow, yeah, by Procter Gas and the house that Carmen Gino put in. I don't know what it is now, but...
Oh, and it's hanging over to the right of it.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, the sumac that you're talking about.
Yeah, the sumacs are, you know, right on top of the sidewalk, and you can't, you know, go underneath them. You have to go around.
Alright, I'll mention it to them. I don't know if they are, or there's a, they're probably on the property. Anything else? Albert?
No, no.
Okay. Alright, so, um, so it's been a great transition, moving into this position. The first 2 weeks were busy. I do want to say that I really thank the Clark's Office, Celia and Mary for being so supportive. And the Public Works has been great, keeping me up to stuff on everything they're doing. And when I ask them to do things, they're basically done that day or the next day. So that's been great. And I've also had great dealings with the Sheriff's Department. When I've called there lately, the dispatchers are awesome, giving me reports and logging in, they immediately respond to me, so, so that's been, it's very, very nice and helpful. The emergency contact list was updated, so I will get copies to everyone. I mentioned this before, the stormwater meter planning. I had the remote meeting with Carrie Garvey from the Watership Consulting and Nancy McGuire from Natural Resources Conservation District. And like I said, we need to host a community visioning meeting with residents, so I'm looking to do that in September. And then they'll send a survey out that will be shared in October for people. It will all be online, the survey is. I already touched base about Chittenden Reservoir, water sewer disconnects we talked about. Kyle and I visited 48 West Street on a concern there for water. And originally, we, we couldn't hear any water running. We did find the, further down off the property in the back, that there was a lot of water coming up. And he went in there and dug, and it looked almost like it was a spring, because it was coming out so much. But then I had someone stop in today that said it wasn't, that they think there's a water break in there. I've reached out to the homeowner in 5 different means and asked him if we could just shut the water off. And I think we can actually shut the water off, because the property's abandoned, and no one's living in there, so there's no reason, I don't think we can go and shut that water off. Because not only is it, it's, you know, infracturing on the neighbors, but it's also just going to ruin that place where something like that has happened. So I've made the form and aware of it, so we'll hopefully take care of that. And get rid of the problem, hopefully. Let's see, West Street paving is completed. We had a couple complaints from people, mostly about their driveways being, having a big drop-off. They did put, was a pretty thick layer of pavement on there. Some were worse than others. But I have contacted Wilks, because a couple of them, they did, because they said anybody who had blocked up, that they would actually do the apron on that. And some of them weren't done really great, so they've gone back, and they've been great. Came and met with me and said, "We'll do anything we can to take care of these people, no problem," so... But the guys have been out there working on the edging of it too. All of our Public Works had flagging training for recertification, and they all are now certified, recertified. State revolving loan program funding application. State revolving loan program funding application for the water infrastructure feasibility study and planning was lacking a signature, so they sent it to me and I signed it and made the necessary changes to me as town manager and Ben as chair. I'm going to start getting bids for salt, sand, and also fuel. And then budgets, we're going to start working with the staff in September. And since I wrote this report, there's just a couple of things I wanted to mention. And one was, we did do, start work, well, we've been trying to do work up on a sinkhole up on Park Street. And the guys went up there today and dug, and there, it looks like there's a leak someplace. So we have somebody from Vermont Rural Water coming to look at it because he has a tool that he can actually figure out and pinpoint where the leak might be, so we're not tearing up the whole road to try to find it. So I don't know, we couldn't tell if it was actually from the edge of the driveway and going further to the owner's house, and perhaps there was a leak there where the hookup was, or if it's back onto the main street and up the road. So they're trying to figure that out. And just a reminder to everybody, power goes off tonight at midnight and is back on at 5:00 AM. So the guys are working tonight, overnight, to take care of any of the, they're meeting with Green Mountain Power and moving the generator around to different areas so that they can kind of keep the work up. Because they have to shut it down so it's safe for the guys from Green Mountain Power to work on things. So that's it. And they're going to do hydrant flushing the week of September 25th through the 29th, and that's been posted around, too, so...
I have a question. I just wondered if the sheriff was notified to come on. Usually, on the first day of school, there's more sheriff presence than we generally have. I'm not sure if that's going to happen.
Okay, I don't know if he took care of it beforehand, but I can double-check tomorrow with them.
Ben?
Yes.
When's the last time you guys had a look at it?
I have no idea, John, but we can find out.
You know, since they're dealing with a lot of superdiction, I don't...
Okay, we'll find out, John. Anything else? If that's all, then is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make sure they didn't pass something in here, because I don't...
Oh, one more thing, Ben. Could these guys get out of the truck and leave the truck? If they can't see the truck, the truck should not be running.
Okay.
I seen that the other day.
What time?
It was a Saturday.
What time, though?
Probably...
Where was it?
Around the bridge.
Which bridge?
Marble Bridge.
Okay, so around three o'clock on Saturday at the Marble Bridge? And the truck was left running? We'll look into that, John.
It was way off the road, I'll be wrong. It was way off the road where the pump station is. I'm just saying, the key should not be there.
We'll look into that. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So...
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.